Yeah, okay. Welcome to the September 16th special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. This is a special meeting because we're meeting at 5:00 PM and that's because Marin County Council of Mayor's and council members had their monthly meeting moved up as a result of the Rosh Hashanah holiday that's supposed to fall next week. So can we get a roll call, please?
Okay, I'm just gonna go in order here. Councilmember Haroff.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Mayor Chu.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have our deputy city manager, Neil Toft, our planning director since Dan Schwartz cannot be here tonight. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is consent calendar. Does anyone on the council or member of the public like to pull any item for further discussion or questions?
One thing I would like to note for the council is on your dais is an amended version of the ordinance which simply adds section on severability which was not in your, which I understand was not in your packet tonight. So it's slightly amended, but it's not a real great, the change isn't of substance.
I'm sorry, Neil, what section is it?
Severability.
It's probably at the end.
At the very end, section three on the second last page, page nine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And you put the number on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Ordinance 1007.
Right. All right, so again, we have our consent calendar up for motion and second if nobody wants to pull it for further discussion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, now's the time for our city manager's report. Does our deputy city manager have anything he'd like to report out?
Actually, we do have a few items of note that the city manager wanted me to relate to you. As the council's aware, there've been a number of fires spread out across the state. So I want to give you a quick update. Captain Cobb is currently serving as a fire line medic at the rope complex near Trinity. Captain Parker, firefighter Fisher, and Captain Erza Coleman are also working in the valley fire up near Cobb and Middletown, helping to help contain that fire and do mop up work here. So far, we've had 14 persons responding to fires this summer. The city's shared services agreements have helped us maintain staffing while assisting with fires throughout the state. Other business, the first town hall meeting was held on September 2nd. It was well attended with lots of new faces and some really good community input. The second town hall meeting will be held on October 7th at 9:30. That's at the Central Marin Police Authority Community Room. We're currently working on the agenda for the meeting, which will be announced and pushed out soon. It will be similar to the first meeting in terms of trying to accomplish or really hear what people believe defines Larkspur's community character. The city continues to prepare for El Nino weather. The National Weather Service has, NOAA has really indicated that it's very likely we're gonna have a real El Nino year, and that should mean heavy rains. We're really pleased with coordination between Ross Valley Cities at the management and first responder level. Chief Schertz has asked the county EOS to help review and assess our response for flood procedures in Larkspur. Also, the council and the residents may have seen Dick Spotswood column in the ABAG-MTC battle for control of regional planning, land use and transportation funding. Staff is monitoring this debate. We do not think Larkspur should weigh in at this time. TAM, our local congestion management agency, has taken a no position stance. We suspect that a number of Marin County-wide agencies will do the same. There certainly is some concern from community groups and planners regarding the sense that this reorganization seems a bit rushed. It certainly could have some great significance to regional planning in the area. So this will continue to be, I think, an item to monitor.
Question, Mr. Mayor. What is ABAG reporting to us regarding that? And maybe our ABAG rep could find out if we don't know that today.
Is this a question for myself?
Yes.
Well, ABAG has reported, they've provided a response of raising a concern with, number one, with their funding, that the impact that this will have to their planning and research arm, not just for Plan Bay Area, but for a number of other functions that they provide for the Bay Area, which is, you know, serving underneath the COG, the Council of Governments, that oversees ABAG. There's a large concern that this will essentially gut their financial pro forma of how they are functioning over the next several few years, and even in the very immediate future, because this action is, could in fact, completely impact their funding at the end of December. MTC has agreed only to continue funding under the current agreement through, to a six-month agreement that I think was first initiated back in June. So normally, they've done a year-to-year agreement, but this time, it was only to six months, and now they're proposing that they maintain, actually withdraw that funding at the end of the six months, and then MTC take on the planning, basically take on land use planning as part of their, under their organization.
The reason I ask is we are represented at the Transportation Authority, which is the MTC or Metropolitan Transportation Commission's implementing agency here in the county. But we also participate in ABAG, and we have all those towns and cities in the county have representation there. So I think it's fair to ask ABAG to weigh in and ask the city if we want to participate in whatever position they're taking. With respect to that, I mean, we're represented at these two entities, and they seem to be in conflict, so I believe we have the right to weigh in on both ends of this.
Yeah.
Given the opportunity.
Well, I think it's a challenging issue, is does the city wish to take a position or does the city, or is what you're suggesting, is we make a request to ABAG to ask for our input on this matter?
Or ask our ABAG rep to find out.
Right. I'll weigh in on that if I have a second. I think Ezra Rappaport, I don't know if you got his email sent around, who's the executive director and position statement of where ABAG feel is weighing in on this, and I'll forward it to you if it got lost in the mail. Also, our Marin County mayors and council members representative is Pat Eklund, who is reporting on that actually tonight at the dinner. And she had sent out a written report and also a video link to some other comments. Plus, the council members who represent the cities in Marin County will be meeting at the end of the month to try to come up with a consensus of where we stand as representatives of the city. So it's all in motion right now. I think Pat Eklund probably has the most handle on what's happening, and I hope to hear her report tonight to see if she has more information. She attended a meeting just the other, I think Wednesday.
Well, just to be clear, the MCC MC rep is supposed to reflect the consensus of the group, as opposed to getting out ahead of them. So I would just...
Let's bring it up tonight when she gives her report.
Just want to make sure that that's the process that's taking place.
Right.
Yeah, if you want to take a quick look at her report, if you go to mccmc.org, go to the calendar, and then it's under the ABAG link.
I've read her report, and I've saw the one from Ezra as well. I just want to make sure Marin discusses it, and if the reps from the various towns and cities in the county have a consensus, the larger group representation should reflect that, as opposed to getting out ahead of them, which often happens.
Understood.
If I could just echo that comment, I think it's really important for us to have a loud voice in this debate. And I guess my question is, and I'm not sure how to direct it, have we heard from the Board of Supervisors on where they're going?
I've only heard through the MTC rep, Supervisor Kinsey, who's taking a watch and wait-and-watch position, but that's on the MTC side of things.
Right.
I mean, there's a local...
That's why I asked the question.
There's a local control issue here that we should...
Yes, there is.
I think it's just beginning to unfold, isn't it?
It's gonna go fast.
It's been unfolding. Yeah, thank you.
Neil, you may just want to go back to Dan. If council wants to have a more substantive discussion about it, we should agendize it.
I would encourage that, actually.
Okay. I think that's kind of what, at staff level, we're sort of wondering how to begin this discussion, or if you want to have this discussion as well. As we've said, the CMAs are holding no position. They really don't want to weigh in and kind of do a turf battle to the two agencies that provide the funding. But certainly for the city's representation, even at planning directors' meeting, we're certainly concerned with what this may mean in terms of our relationship to the agencies, the support they do or don't provide, and how they, you know, support. A very interesting aspect of this is MTC wants to take on the land use and regional planning and transportation arm, but does not want to take over doing the regional housing needs assessment. So, and those two seem very entwined, and so from a planning perspective, that seems, you know, if we're going to start consolidating the service, you know, maybe, it may make sense over time that these agencies are consolidated to some degree or what have you, but both having representation and having a good functional relationship with the, at the staff level is also important. And one of the, I kind of echo the concern of the Bay Area Planning Directors Association that if this happens really fast, there could be a lot of fallout to how well these, the next Plan Bay Area process goes, how the communication works through, you know, a quickly reformed agency. But again, we're really looking for some direction from council, and as I think it's well stated, there's a lot in motion right now.
And all of that just reinforces the concern that we have a coordinated position as a city on how these issues get resolved.
Good. Councilmember Way, through the mayor, could you remind me when the towns and cities ABAG reps are supposed to convene?
So a doodle pool, a pool went out just yesterday, and there are five dates as potentials, and they're from the end of the month until November 8th, somewhere in there, and it had, a firm date hasn't been set yet, but I'll let you know. In fact, we might find out tonight if enough respondees have responded to when their availability is.
The reason I ask is it would be helpful if we could agendize this before that meeting at our council.
Okay, I'll find out if there's a...
So we could direct you.
Right. I'll find out if they've come up with a firm date yet. That was just assessing people's availability.
Yeah, I think what I saw was they're trying to set it up for the end of the month, so we, I think, hopefully, we have another meeting before then, so that may give us the opportunity to have it on the agenda.
Great.
Okay, did you have anything else you'd like to report out on?
Yes, a couple other items. I'll try to be quick. One, residents who subscribe to our library's notify me service on our website have started receiving weekly emails from Book Sizzle. These weekly emails highlight a few books and topics of the week, and the email includes links to resources on our website. We encourage residents to check it out. Also, wanted to let you know that the Planning and Building Department recently hired a new assistant planner. He's now in his second week of work. His name is Nicholas Armour. He came to us from Oakland and graduated from Berserkly with a undergraduate degree in legal studies. Nicholas also has a double major from University of Southern California in both city planning and public administration. He has worked in a number of internships with both planning departments and city management offices, so it seems he is a glutton for punishment. Nick is actually really a bright young man. He comes with a lot of talents and brings professionalism and enthusiasm to our department. I encourage you to stop by and say hello. Also, one other note, if, for the men in the room, if you do happen to use the restroom today, you'll see some boxes and some large pieces. Those are actually our next whiteboard that is going to be up. We're gonna have a solid whiteboard for the projector, so you're gonna get a lot cleaner visuals in here, hopefully, by your next meeting, so. And that's it for reports.
I'm in the restroom.
And the ladies will just have to wait.
Where else would it be?
All right, does anyone have any questions or comments for Neil? All right, seeing none, now's the time for council member reports and comments, if they have any. Start down at this end.
I'll just briefly mention, I'm looking forward tomorrow to attending the MC's annual retreat over at the Marin Art and Garden Center, and we're gonna go over our past year, which was full of successes, and do some planning for the future. So looking forward to a productive day tomorrow.
Okay.
I have two things. One is in my role in the Disaster Committee, and also I attended DC 3, is that, and I see Mr. Howard's here, which I'm really pleased to see. Fire in Marin is a symposium that will be held, a two-hour free class. The next one coming up is September 21st here at Central Marin Police Authority. And I know we have a short audience today, but for those of you looking at home, it's a very important class about how to prepare yourself and your family and your neighborhood for fire, which is very relevant now as we're all seeing what's happening in Middletown and that area. Second thing I wanted to bring up, and people can talk to me about this offline if they want to, is I am our representative to the California League of Cities, League of California Cities, and there are four resolutions that we'll have an opportunity to vote on, and you all authorized me. Two of them, I think, are relevant for something that we may need to pay attention to. One is about group homes and over-concentration of alcohol and drug rehabilitation centers in residential communities. So I'll be attending that to see what the league wants to vote on. And the third is a resolution to support SP 593, which will come up for us, which is Mike McGuire is bill regarding short-term or temporary rentals within jurisdictions. So I'll attend that meeting, and I'll let you know. If anyone wants more about that from the council and has a particular interest, I can send you the link to those resolutions. The other two, I don't believe are as relevant to us as to other parts of California, so I won't be paying attention to those. And that's all.
For any members of the council who have heard other residents either write in or have expressed some consternation about vacation rentals by the owners, we're gonna take that issue up second meeting in October. So we've already been planning for that discussion, but yes.
I was fortunate enough to attend the Bay Conservation Development Commission Summit in San Francisco today at the Exploratorium. I'm the alternate to Napa Mayor Jill Tekel to the four North Bay Counties, to the commission. We heard comments today from Senator Feinstein. I'll summarize quickly. She just cited new information from NOAA regarding climate change. Professor Hanson at the National Oceanographic AA cited new information that if climate change and global warming is not held to two degrees or less over the next 50 years to the end of the century, we're looking at sea level rise that may exceed 10 feet, as opposed to the estimates we've heard before. So it became very urgent today at the summit, so I just, I thought I would share that information with you. So whatever our adaptation strategies are, we need to take them very, very seriously.
It's called the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration.
Thank you for reminding me. In my excitement, I forgot.
Anything? No. Just want to quickly say, you know, I mentioned to you before, the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth had its funding, well, uncertain, and we only got funded until September 30th. We found out about two hours ago they're gonna fund us all the way through to the end of the fiscal year. So that's good news for this year. Really what they're stressing is that they want all the local coalitions to start looking for grant opportunities and, you know, getting their own source of revenue for that. And we've actually prepared for that at the federal level last year, but missed the deadline by nine hours because they couldn't give us the registration number for us to file online, and, you know, actually, a number of applicants ran into that situation. So it wasn't just us. So that's good news, and, you know, I know we won't be going to it, but tonight at Redwood High, the coalition is, you know, part of a presentation by the Redwood PTSA where they're gonna be talking about the, have some specialists coming in talking about the myths associated with marijuana. And those topics are coming as a result of the possible ballot measures for the legalization or decriminalization of marijuana, you know, in November 16 ballot. Okay, now's the time for a public comment. If any members of the audience would like to address the council on a matter not on our agenda tonight, but within our jurisdiction, please feel free to step up to the microphone. Hi, John.
Good evening, council members. Just working?
No.
Oh. Was it after work?
Yes, so they can get it on the audio.
There we go. Thank you. I'm John Howard, 191 Golden Hind Passage in Corder Madura, and I'm here representing the Twin Cities Neighborhood Response Group program. And you remember that maybe last May I was here proposing that the Twin Cities hire an NRG coordinator to keep our program going and to nurture it and to develop it. I'm just back here to urge you to move this up the agenda of important things to do. You may not know that this has not been budgeted in Corder Madura. It's actually a line item that's as of last night, still to be voted on, but it's actually on the proposed budget. That's a good thing. And, you know, no pressure, but we really hope that this is something we can, we can start to get done. It's a program that four or five neighborhoods in Larkspur are now actively participating in. We're gonna have another drill in a couple of weeks. Radios will be out, they'll be talking to central authorities. It's really something that's developing and working. So we hope you can, you can pick up your half of this coordinator to help the program keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address the council for anything tonight? No? Okay. And, hi, good evening.
Hello, council. My name is Adrian Rodriguez. I am a reporter with the Marin Independent Journal, and I've spoken with Mayor Larry Chu before. I don't think I've had the pleasure of speaking with the rest of the council yet. Also, Mr. Neil Toft, he and I have had a few conversations over the phone. I just wanted to introduce myself, let you folks know that I'm covering the Twin Cities as well as Mill Valley and the Tiburon Peninsula. And after the meeting, I'll come up and give you my business card so we could connect. But I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Nice place, name, face.
Yeah, Adrian, thank you for covering the Larkspur Library Community Center. That was a nice article.
Thank you.
Welcome to the fray.
We have one public hearing item tonight, and it's the introduction and way of the first reading of ordinance 1007. It says 1008 on the agenda, but I guess we'll go by what came out in our most current revision. But it is an amendment to the Larkspur Municipal Code related to expediting permits related to small residential rooftop solar systems. And we will have our planning director slash deputy city manager make that report.
Okay, thank you, mayor and members of the city council. This is actually an amendment that's largely about process rather than regulation in particular. On September 21st in 2014, Governor Brown signed into law Assembly Bill 2188, which amends the Solar Rights Act of 1978. As amended, the state law of the California Government Code provides it's the policy of the state to promote and encourage installation and use of solar systems by limiting obstacles to their use and minimizing permitting costs of such systems. In furtherance of this objective, the government code requires that on or before September 30th of this year, every city or county shall adopt an ordinance that creates an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop energy systems. It requires that the agencies substantially conform to the recommendations for expedited permitting, including checklists and standard plans contained in a, what is known as the California Solar Permitting Guidebook adopted by the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. And specific recommendations for permitting include checklist contained in what's attached to that guidebook is a toolkit for local governments. And we've provided the link for that document. As I stated, this is mostly about process. We are in the process of working on online submitted, we do not see that that would be a challenge. This state regulation is largely to address obstacles to the permitting process, generally through larger bureaucracies, obstacles put up by fire district regulations, or local homeowner associations as well. So essentially, we believe we have no challenge in meeting these guidelines. We cannot, at this time, to let you know, we can't accept payments online. We're gonna be working towards that in the future. But again, these are guidelines. We are, in fact, the checklist that's provided through this guidebook is highly complex, and we can't accept that, but we actually require a lot less information than is necessarily required under this guidebook. We currently permit most of these over-the-counter, these small rooftop systems over-the-counter. We're able to do that. We work with, I talked with our inspector today, we work with five or six principal solar permit, solar companies. They really understand what we need, and if they come in during the inspector's counter time, we can usually do these over-the-counter. So we do not see that this will be a challenge for the city. It's simply a matter of adopting the ordinance to comply with state statute. And so what we recommend is the council introduce and waive first reading of the ordinance entitled Expedited Permitting Procedures for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems, and find that in addition to this, the ordinance is exempt from SEQA per se to section 15061 B3 of the SEQA guidelines. Do you have any questions, the staff?
Okay, just matter of clarification, I was incorrect in stating that it's 1007. It is in fact 1008, so.
That would be correct. That would be the next number in line.
Okay.
Neil, if you can remember, just this year, how many people applied for the solar rooftop?
You know, I haven't gotten a number on that, but I think we're averaging maybe one every week or two.
Really?
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
And I can find out. I can get that. I'm probably being a little bit optimistic on that, but it does, it is a pretty straightforward system. We've resolved with the fire department what their guidelines are. As we've understood, a real challenge for some areas is where the, the fire, it's a fire district that's separate from the local agency, and the fire district maybe has all different review process, and so it can really kind of boggle up getting these done in a quick manner. And so it can really kind of boggle up getting these done in a quick manner, and it can add a lot of expense to processing of what's essentially a pretty simple permit.
Neil, I have a question for you. Do, I remember when this came through the legislature, there were some concerns that the streamlining might ignore some typical building permit issues such as structural integrity in, in this review of an application. Is the city allowed to make sure that we're not creating a, some sort of building code life safety issue by the streamlining of this? Or are we, are these sorts of things built into what we're proposing?
I, I would, I would speculate, and I'm, I'm not the building official, so that I'm, I haven't really delved into the weeds of this that deep, but I would speculate that essentially the checklist would, would address, should address that issue outright, and otherwise, and we are otherwise addressing it through our, our review of these products. I could certainly, I think, have the building official respond to that question before you come back for final adoption.
Well, I see here in section one, paragraph F, that the building official may require an applicant to apply for a use permit if the building official finds based on substantial evidence that the solar energy system could have a specific adverse impact upon the health, public health and safety. I just would want to make sure that he uses that discretion, especially in a retrofit project where structural analysis might be.
Maybe necessary.
Maybe necessary to determine whether adverse impacts are, can be avoided.
It's also in section 3C. It's written a lot of different sections to make sure.
Yeah.
Impact upon the public health and safety.
And 3C, submitting an application, an applicant shall verify to the applicant's reasonable satisfaction use of standard engineering evaluation techniques.
There we go.
Support the structure.
Thank you.
For small residential.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions on this side? Neil, I just had one regarding section H, where it says, "No approval by homeowners association and shall be required for construction of a small residential rooftop solar energy system." I mean, we don't, we don't have language that strong now. So I'm, I'm wondering what it does to existing HOAs and CCNRs that exist.
Well, what, what this is really saying is that, that the city does not require HOA approval for, the, the city will sometimes request for design review applications or applications that are involved in a, in an area that's a condominium complex, will request and try to essentially draw out HOA approval to assure that there's, that the applicant is not stepping into a, a conflict with his own, with his or her own homeowners association. This is really trying to clarify, because it is part of the legislation, that the city will not require HOA approval for rooftop solar systems. And so, you know, it, it's just not something we would require for the permit. If the HOA decides to then take that on as a civil matter, they'll actually have some challenges through this legislation themselves. It's just simply making it clear for staff and the building official, and for the applicant as well, that we don't require that, even if you're part of a condominium association. Does, does that make sense? Or is?
Yeah, it does. I'll, I'll think about that some more between now and the next time, if we need to like.
Just to clarify, that's just a restatement of existing law, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's actually a restatement of what's in the statute as a list of things that should be included in the local ordinance. What, what actually did. Yeah, that's just a restatement. In fact, and this was vetted by the city attorney's office. They, they had actually worked on this ordinance with a couple cities, and I double-checked that language with them, so they were very comfortable with it.
One last question for me, and, and I'm not suggesting this, but I'm, I'm asking if our, any of our city, other provisions of our zoning ordinance, specifically design review or heritage review, are those impacting this at all?
No, this is actually process for issuing permits for systems that are permitted. We do have some review standards for solar systems that exceed height limits, and I think that was kind of identified in the, in the report that currently typically building permits for flush-mounted or low-profile solar panels are issued either over the counter with expedited turnaround of no more than three to five days. The city, right now, we exempt solar panels from height limits for any solar system, except for any solar system greater than three feet above a roofline, and then that's subject to design review. And ground-mounted solar panels are subject to setbacks and accessory structure limitations.
Thank you. I see that in your analysis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for planning director? Okay, seeing none, since it's a public hearing item, I'll open it up to members of the public if they'd like to comment or ask questions about this. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the council for, for the discussion or a motion to introduce and waive first reading of this ordinance. Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a business item, and it's Regional Transportation Plan for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and we have a discussion about a couple funding items. I guess we'll have planning director make the introduction, and since it's part of some questions and guidance that Councilmember Hillmer needs as a TAM representative, then he can add some additional comments and color to this.
Okay, thank you. Well, as stated in the report, the MTC is soliciting for submissions for the next iteration of the Regional Transportation Plan, otherwise known as the RTP. This guides MTC in making funding decisions. And in its upcoming meeting, the TAM board is expected to review projects for inclusion on RIN's RPT submission to MTC. Larkspur staff, we've submitted three projects for TAM for consideration, but as requested, that one of these projects be withdrawn for this round and revised at a later date. Two of the projects moving forward are proposals to address connectivity issues between a future smart train station and the Larkspur ferry terminal, and improvements to Sir Francis Drake corridor to improve traffic flow. You've been provided some information on these two proposals. The third proposal, which was submitted jointly by Coeur d'Albaud and Larkspur staff, would have revisited improvements to the northbound Highway 101 corridor that were reviewed in the Green Bay corridor study a few years ago. The towns withdrew this proposal after determining that additional assessment at the Marin County level should take, take, take place before the proposed regional consideration. Councilmember Hillmer has asked that this be brought forward and is seeking discussion and direction of the two submitted proposals in preparation for the TAM board meeting. So I'll leave this discussion for direction.
Go ahead, I'll let you start.
The only reason I made that request, Mr. Mayor, is so that we follow council protocol in getting consensus from the council and clear direction to the TAM rep.
Dan, my question to you is, do you want us to discuss what's going on? Do you have more than what's being discussed here? Are you not pleased with what you see, or?
No, I'm, I'm supportive of what's been recommended. I had, I had asked for that discussion when projects that were part of the former Green Bay 101 project proposed by TAM that were, was ultimately rejected, there were some suggestions that that be brought back, and I wanted to make sure that council was clear on what was being proposed and, and recommended. But those, those have been withdrawn.
That was my only question. Dan, was, is there a timeline on when those might be revisited, or is that still unclear? Proposal number three, which was withdrawn?
It's unclear.
Okay.
I think from the standpoint of SMART coming online possibly by the, what, end of 16, and then second phase Larkspur, yeah, the first project's got a lot of, you know, we're enough to deal with traffic and circulation out there, so that's a good one. Is the four lanes going all the way out to the bridge, or just the extra 700 feet up to the city limits?
Great question. That was my question.
I'd have to clarify with the public works director, my assumption is that it's to the city limits.
Yeah. Well, we'll be able to take a few more, what, 600 or 700 more feet of cars off the freeway.
I just, I just wanted to ask a couple questions about these as well, because it's not clear to me that actually we are taking traffic off the freeway. And I'd be curious to know what the, the assessment has been about whether this, that particular project will actually accomplish that goal. The second question I had is, in terms of the, the SMART stationary connectivity proposal, we don't have, at this point, to my knowledge, confirmation that we will actually have that SMART stationary, or that the SMART station funded in Larkspur. So my question is whether or not we're premature to be supporting proposals that will enhance connectivity to a station that is not funded. Has that been addressed?
The best I, information I have is that SMART, at the director level, is working hard to get the remaining funding. He seems optimistic. It's part of the plan. And again, this is part of an application for a request that these improvements be included in the regional transportation plan according to TAM. So if we don't include them, we will not be in queue to get money for improvements in that area, which I think our best efforts would try to coordinate those projects we anticipate, including the SMART segment.
And I guess that's my question. Do, do we have a rational basis for anticipating funding of the extension of SMART to Larkspur? Right now, there's no money for it.
I'm not able to provide you certainty beyond what I've described.
And how's the third lane looking on the 580? Do you find that it's going to happen a lot sooner than what's predicted?
Well, I think that's certainly yet to be seen, it's certainly in flux, but there is, there is a significant push at the, at the state level to have that move forward quickly. I think, and the sense is, I think there's going to be some challenges with the technicalities of Caltrans and, and getting it done as quick as it's anticipated, but I think that's a large, there's a large push to move it forward. How well that actually solves traffic in Sir Francis Drake is yet to be seen, is that the local traffic issue will still be somewhat of a, a challenge. So, but I, you know, I think as, as, like with the SMART station, there's a lot of movement that would really depend, you know, I, I think that's certainly something that is being pushed forward at the state level. So there's a, there's a larger regional context that is trying to push for getting that done. And where, again, I think it certainly is the policy and the direction and goals of SMART to put in, to get the SMART station to come to Larkspur. But as noted by Councilmember Haroff, the, the funding still remains a very principal challenge.
And I guess that's the reason I, I raise these issues. I want to make sure that as a city, we're not getting ourselves ahead of where processes are going. The two things that caused me concern with these proposals is, one, we are facilitating expanded utilization of Sir Francis Drake, Sir Francis Drake as access to the Richmond Bridge. And I think there are alternatives to that going forward that need to be considered. And I don't, I, I feel a little uncomfortable supporting proposals that will take us as a city in support of a particular direction on the utilization of that access route. As far as SMART is concerned, the reality is, there are a lot of issues surrounding the viability of SMART, in my own personal view, and making commitments as a city to be supportive of what may, may be proposed. I understand it's been proposed for a long time, but its viability is in question, and I, I want to make sure we are cautious as a city before we get out ahead of the process that in fact has not been put into stone at a state level.
Two, two comments. First, TAM does have on its task list, even though it's not included in the regional transportation plan yet because the projects are not that far along, for, to look at a direct 101 to 580 connector this year. So it's on, on the study list. We have to update the studies that were done 10 years ago, get those into the environmental review process, and move those along before we can really go after significant funding for any detailed project. Secondly, the alternative to what's being proposed is to not support these projects, which TAM does support, and therefore tell the region, our local, our regional transportation entity that we don't want the money. So it's, it's really about keep, staying at the table to make sure we have money for improvements that'll address impacts for the, when the rail segment is completed and brought to Larkspur. So the issue that we're, that's facing us is, do we want to make sure that we're in, in queue to receive toll funding to address these impacts as, as is intended, or do we want to contradict our regional transportation agency and, and tell them we don't want money for improvements in this area?
And I appreciate those comments, and I think that is in fact, that is in fact the issue. And I worry a little bit about the cart driving the horse on both of those things. We have opportunities to get funding for projects that I'm not sure we have a community support for. And, you know, it's great to get, it's great to get money when we have opportunities to do that, but if we don't have defined plans and proposals, particularly as far as SMART is concerned, when we don't have defined plans and proposals in terms of the north 101 connector, then we are getting money to take things in particular, we are allowing ourselves to encourage getting money for projects that may be incompatible with what our community wants on a long-term basis. And I think we've had challenges with that process in the past. We've had those challenges with the stationary planning process where we took money in order to get something going, which the community did not want. So I want to make sure I'm not prejudging the outcome of this discussion by any means. But before we put our hat in the ring in terms of what we think are the right answers in terms of requesting funds, that we are cautious in making sure that we are actually reflecting the interests of our community in making those decisions. So this is, this is intended to be helpful to you as our TAM representative. This is not a vote, but I think it's important for you to understand that sensitivity as you reflect the interests of our community in these decisions.
You know, one of the things that, you know, I, I don't know what the benefits or the, you know, true benefits are to, you know, extending out 600, 700 feet to our city limits with four lanes, you know. Our public works director would say that, you know, anything that pushes the, the merge further is, is a benefit, but.
Is there a way to get clarification on the extent of that improvement? I don't, I want to make sure I'm not misstating by saying it stops at the city boundary, because I, I myself am not certain that that's the case.
I, I believe that the intent was to take it up to the intersection.
Of Anderson?
Of Anderson, although I don't believe, it's not clear to me that. Of Anderson, although I don't believe, it's not clear to me that the county is necessarily a sponsor, or San Diego-San Rafael is necessarily party to this proposal, so I'd have to look a little closer, but I think that that would be the intent, is to, is to bring it further, but I'm not certain of that.
Yeah. Anyway, where I was leading...
This is actually a newer proposal. This is not like a rollover project. A number of RTP projects are projects that have been in, in the past RTP have not been realized are rollover. This is not a, this is not particularly a rollover project. This is new proposal.
Yeah, so what I was leading up to is I can't evaluate that, because we haven't been given any presentation on that, but what we do know from a number of previous discussions is that even without Smart, these improvements are things that we need in order to make things flow better through the Sir Francis Drake-Larkspur landing intersection.
Transit.
You know, so, you know, I actually view it as, that project is a good thing, especially now on the weekends, when you have Country Mart having events there. We're seeing backups on Sir Francis Drake that are similar to during the week, because you have so many people that are going to shopping center and turning left there. So, you know...
And I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is that I don't, I looked at these proposals, and I thought they were actually quite vague, and didn't provide the kind of level, a detailed level of analysis to support a decision that I would like to be able to make to support them, quite frankly. And what I worry about is that we, as a city, are taking a position for allocation and spending of money that will take us in a particular direction that I'm not convinced is the best direction for our communities on a regional basis. I'm just, I'm not convinced about that. So I understand we have funding opportunities, and I encourage the city to take advantage of funding opportunities where they are appropriate, but I didn't see in these proposals enough analysis to allow me to be supportive in a way that I think we're being requested to do tonight.
In regards to the Smart Train, one thing that I recently saw was Jared Huffman's support of asking for appropriation of another $20 million to continue that leg of the train. I know he will be in Corder Medera at an event on Saturday, next Saturday, which might be a good opportunity to have some conversation about that in a face-to-face meeting, too. It's Saturday, I believe that's the 29th. I'll be attending that event.
So do you need this direction by the next TAM meeting, which is probably next week?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have another council meeting before the next TAM meeting. I actually think we ought to have a council express the consensus of the council on this, so that I have clear direction. I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of this, because it deals with problems we're facing today.
I would agree with that myself.
I do, too. I agree.
Well, before we have any other further discussion...
This doesn't require a vote, correct?
I mean, what we're giving is direction to representatives...
Nodding heads would be good enough for me, Mr. Mayor.
But would any members of the public like to comment on this item, or ask council or staff questions? Okay, seeing none, then, you know, we can basically wrap this discussion up. It seems like at least the majority of this council would support the, our TAM rep to go back and support these proposals. Do you need a vote, or is just head nodding?
I get a consent, I get a sense of the consensus, and I would welcome Councilmember Haroff's attendance at the TAM meeting, if he would like to make comments at that time.
As your alternate, I'd be happy to attend.
Okay. For members of the audience and on TV who are watching, I guess that's next Thursday, 7:00 PM, is that correct?
The 23rd.
The 24th, it's at 7:00. Marin County Civic Center.
All right. Okay, well, that wraps up our agenda for tonight, and what I'd like to propose for adjournment tonight is that we adjourn in memory of Tom McNally, a longtime Park and Recreation Commissioner for Larkspur, who recently passed away. So I'll make motion to adjourn in his memory. Anyone like to second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I express the council's sympathy to Tom McNally's family. He was a highly valued Park and Rec Commissioner, and we miss him greatly.
Yeah, and Neil, I guess you can just pass that on to Cynthia, and she can prepare a letter for his family.
I'll do that, and I'll, also, as a personal note, Tom McNally's daughter, Megan, was, is actually my sister's best friend from growing up. They were very good friends, and so we're, our family is saddened to hear of the passing as well.
Yeah, maybe you can send her a copy of that letter as well, then.
I will.
Okay, great, thank you. Right, thank you. For those who are attending or watching, it is now 5:56 PM, and our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.